We'll go ahead and proceed, Mr. Mayor. You have a call.
All right, we're going to open with a moment of meditation. But tonight, we're going to do it a little bit different. We're going to dedicate this minute of meditation to members of the whole mayor. With family man, firefighter, house mechanic, so much more meaning to the community. It's always like death, you fall here. A close affair with his family and friends of his, and wish them well, with luck in the future. So we'll open with a moment of meditation, please. Pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in its essence. If there is a motion for adoption, ladies and gentlemen, would you get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A second.
Motion to make a better self-education, adopt the agenda, then.
All right. And, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I'll go ahead and do the roll call for that for the public. Thank you, sir. The motion, yes, we had the motion by Mayor Protem Selby, the second by Commissioner Borland. We'll go by roll call. Ironay, Mayor Protem Selby.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Ironay.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Ironay.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mayor, the motion carries, and the agenda is adopted.
All right, we'll have a motion, we'll have a motion for consent agenda also. So would you approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda presented.
Second.
Motion to make a better self-education, the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. We'll go to the roll call for this motion. Ironay, Mayor Protem Selby.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Ironay.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Ironay.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mayor, the consent agenda passes.
All right. Mayor Protem Selby, you have a public hearing. You want to add to that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public hearing for the annexation of town-owned property at Zero Sir Walter Raleigh Street. This particular property is owned by the town. It's across the street from the P. Island Cookhouse property. It's currently under Dare County, but it's adjacent to the town and is being proposed for annexation into the town limits. Tonight, the only purpose tonight is to have a public hearing, so the public has the opportunity to comment on this particular annexation in accordance with state law. The board is, will not be taking action tonight on the annexation. That would come at a later meeting because the state law, the current state law indicates we need to give folks an additional 24 hours past a public hearing to provide comments to the town of Manio. Should anybody listening desire to do so, they can make their written comments to the town manager at the following email address. It's J.A.Y.E.R.S., that's J.A.Y.E.R.S. at ManioNC.gov. Mr. Mayor, the public hearing, we would, you would be entertaining a motion to open the public hearing on the annexation of town-owned property.
All right, we have a motion of a public hearing on the town-owned property.
Mr. Burke.
Aye.
This is Commissioner Collins. I'm on the line now.
Mr. Mayor, if the minutes can reflect that Commissioner Collins has entered the meeting at 6:35, and you've got a, let's see, you had a motion from Commissioner Burke.
A second.
Yes, sir. Roll call. Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem Selby, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Ironay.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Ironay.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mayor, the motion carries for entry into the public hearing.
All right.
All right. In the current environment, we are looking, we're going to look online to see if there are any participants who are calling in who would like to make a comment here in the public hearing, and the content would be limited to the annexation of town-owned property at Zero Sir Walter Raleigh Street. We're going to look up on the screen here, and if anybody's interested, attendees should indicate their interest by virtually raising your hand. If you hit star nine on your phone, it will raise your hand, and we will recognize you by the last four digits of your phone number. Mr. Mayor, we do have one person who has already raised their hand. The last four digits of the phone number are 1112. So caller with the last four digits of 1112, you will be unmuted now, and if you'd like to go ahead and make your comments here for the public hearing.
James, it's Christine Walker. I'm not able to call in as a panelist, only as an attendee. I've been on since the consent agenda.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. So it looks, it looks like in terms of the software here, if it didn't allow you in, we'll let the town clerk reflect that Commissioner Walker is on, is participating virtually, and our facilitator here will leave your phone on unmute as a member of the Board of Commissioners here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I've tried to, you know, I've tried a couple numbers, and I've texted y'all as well, so if it could reflect that I was there just having technical difficulties since the consent agenda.
Christine, try to do star six.
Oh, right now?
We've got everybody on the phone. We can hear both Commissioner Collins and Commissioner Burke.
Okay.
So you're both on the line. We'll make sure you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
And we'll continue with the public hearing. If there's any participants who would like to speak on the annexation, please hit star nine, and your hand will be raised. We have five attendees that are participating virtually beyond the board members previously identified. If any of you would like to comment on the annexation, please hit star nine.
We want to start at the back end, we want to move along.
Thank you, sir. So if it's, given there's no participation, if it's time to close the public hearing, I guess you entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
All right, the gentleman.
I move to close the public hearing on the annexation.
This is Dan, I said.
Roll call. Mayor Protem Selby, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Ironay.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Ironay.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you have, your, the vote to close the public hearing is passed.
If you have a restricted public hearing.
Yes, sir. So next up on the agenda, item number six is public comment. This is for information. So I will go ahead and read the instructions, and then we'll look to see if folks want to participate in this section of the meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself and your location so that your statements can be recorded. So as we enter into public comment here, we'll look up on the screen. Those who are interested in making comment, please hit star nine on your phone, and your hand will be raised. We do have one person with hand raised. This person has the last four digits of 4640. We'll go ahead, our facilitator will go ahead and unmute you in it, and please go ahead and identify yourself, your location, and make your comment to the Board.
My name is Tim Teepel. I live at 101 Fernando Street. Good evening, Commissioners. I hope all or most of you have had a chance to review my email on downtown parking with the pictures that I have provided and that I have many more from overlooking Queen Elizabeth. I ask that you really think about this easy solution to allow more spaces due to people that do not completely pull up to the next car in front of them. The town is underutilizing the parking on this street and also other streets such as Budley have to offer. With painting the parallel lines would show just how many spaces are available for these streets and give a clear picture of how to properly park on these streets. The other hope with painting such lines would hopefully help the people not to park in the yellow curbs, which since last week, at least five tickets were ridden and two were called in today. I ask that anybody listening sees a car parked in the yellow to please call the non-emergency number one, so we don't have another repeat from last week, where a semi-truck, where a semi-truck could not make the turn from Budley onto Queen Elizabeth, closing half the street of Queen Elizabeth for an hour. And two, so we can start getting real information and numbers on this problem. With painting the parallel parking lines, it would help show that these yellow curbs are not to be parked on. I also hope in the future, which has been discussed with the 20-year plan, a loading and unloading area since there are none available in downtown. In closing, I hope that you please move forward on looking at painting these lines so it can be done in the off-season to not inconvenience the business owners downtown. And once again, thank you for letting me speak on this matter, and I hope to be seeing you face-to-face in the meeting room, in Town Hall, in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, we still have some callers on the line, and if any of those callers should like to make a public comment, if you hit star nine on your phone, your hand will be raised, and you'll have the opportunity to ask for commissioners. Don't see any up there right now. Anybody wanting to comment, please hit star nine on your phone. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to item number seven, new business. This is for action. Item 7A is selection of engineering firm for Shallow Bag Bay Sewer Pump Station Replacement. This is a very important project to the town's infrastructure, and it is the, is the one downtown, on the waterfront, serves multiple areas of town, and it's the subject of a $1.1 million combination of financing with, from the state and falling down from the state and federal government, with half a million dollars in grant or loan forgiveness and 600 and 6,000 in zero-interest loan over 20 years. However, we do, before we can build it, we've got to design it, and the staff here has gone ahead in accordance with state law, done a qualifications-based selection process. We advertised in so many different places, everything from, everything from newspapers to online, to also going to the state's historically underutilized business or hub zone that gives opportunities for minority and disadvantaged business enterprises. In this particular case, we, the town had, did in fact receive, we received less submitted packages than last time. Last time, we had two projects that solicited eight packages. This time, we only received one. For the town, the firm was considered very well-qualified, had experience in these exact type of projects in multiple jurisdictions here in eastern North Carolina, and their references were impeccable. So the town staff is recommending, is recommending that we select green engineering for the design of the Shallow Bag Bay Sewer Pump Station Replacement Project.
They were the only ones to apply for this?
Yes, Commissioner Burke.
Okay.
How long was the bid, how long was it open?
Let's see, we, it was, it was put out in early August, and the middle deadline was August 26th. We actually gave them longer than state law requires. We were trying to get some extra time because we were going around the state trying to solicit firms. The only thing I can, I was actually a little surprised to not get so many, but it's, this one was a little bit different from some of the other projects because the folks who might have looked at this project would have seen that the firm that did submit had done the engineering review before as part of the first step in this process. So they may have, maybe they falsely assumed they didn't have a shot, but of course, we give a fair shot to every firm that submits. A green engineering, sir.
Adam Wilson.
Yes, sir. Adam Wilson, yes, sir.
That's on two weeks, it was a grand?
No, this would have been, it would have been a minimum of three weeks. I think we were only required to do two, but we wanted to expand it to give a chance for more firms, especially with us, with the website and newspapers and such. Mr. Mayor, should?
James, this is Commissioner Collins. How much was the bid for?
In this particular case, state law requires that they, that they, we can't actually submit, solicit a number from a, from the engineer when we, we're supposed to first select them based on qualifications, and then we negotiate a contract with the highest-rated offer, and in this case, that is green. And should, should the Board decide that the process would be for the Board to authorize, authorize us to negotiate with green engineering for that fee, and if it's suitable, then authorize us to sign the contract in any amendments, so.
I thought, now you know, there had to be two, or at least two bidders, am I right?
Actually, there, in state law, there's, there's a couple different categories. So in the case of a construction bid, like?
I don't have an objection, I'm just asking.
Yep, yep, we checked, we did check that statute. So when it comes to construction bids, like we're doing for the town common, that we know is going to be above 500,000, that's a formal bid, that requires three bids to be valid in state law, or we have to rebid it. But for qualifications-based selection of engineers and architects, state law says that we, even if we only have one, as long as they're qualified, that we can go ahead and negotiate with them.
He was, he was, Green was the only one that actually bid then, right?
Yes, sir.
I just want to get straight in my mind.
Yes, sir, and that was actually, first place I went was the general statutes after we saw we only had one.
I've always heard you had to have three, at least three bidders, and then you could accept two.
Yep. On the construction side, that's absolutely correct. Luckily, this is the architectural engineering.
What's the feeling of the Board? We still had to get a vote on it, don't we, James?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What's the feeling of the Board? Don't have no attorney. Get a motion.
This is Commissioner Walker. They've done work for the town in the past, and they are highly qualified, so, I mean, we would have to approve the amount of the contract afterwards, so I guess we should go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve Green as the engineer for that project.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I know, I know you've got a motion on the floor, Mr. Mayor. Just to the point of clarification, the authorization here would be, we have an existing, we have an existing budget, budget for this work, so this vote would actually authorize the town manager to negotiate and sign the contract, but within the existing budget. Otherwise, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, yes.
Misunderstanding there. I never want to exceed my authority, so I wanted to make sure that.
Well, that's great motion, and if she wants to make that suggestion, she has the authority.
Yes.
Except Christine. I agree with Christine, they're reputable firm, that's all that's said.
Yes, I'll amend that to authorize the town manager to negotiate the contract with green engineering and to sign it and any amendments that may come along.
A second.
Right.
Thank you, sir. We'll do the roll call. Mayor Protem Selby, Ironay.
Did you say yes within the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why she will be basing the law.
Yes, ma'am.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Ironay.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Ironay.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed.
All right, motion passes. We authorize the town manager to go ahead and negotiate with green associated.
Thank you, sir. Next up on the agenda, section eight is old business. These items are for action. Item number 8A is the proposed Court of Ordinances text amendment to establish the Community Police Advisory Board and the Special Events Committee. This is old business because it was, these were suggestions from the, we had suggestions from the board members before, and it was discussed at the last meeting, that it would be suitable to go ahead and establish these committees. Because they're standing committees, they would go on, not just be a short-term task force, they have to be put into our code of ordinances. We have put in the code of ordinances both of these, both these boards, so what you have before you is establishment of these, of these two particular items. There is some flexibility built in here, where it allows a committee size of no less than three, but no more than seven, so that you have a manageable size on each committee or board, but it's also large enough to get representation to serve the whole community, and that's a very important part, as we talked about, the recruitment for these, to make sure that we are representing the entire community. That same thing holds true for both the Community Police Advisory Board as well as the Special Events Committee. We're also trying not to have too big of a burden, so, but we are, but they are required to meet at least quarterly, and of course, we'll have town staff as liaison, liaison and provide support for both of these, these particular bodies, these, one's a committee and one's an advisory board. So we'll make sure the staff support season helps them get off on the right foot. But we believe that this, this proposed text amendment does meet the, does meet the desire of the Board to make sure we get these important committees off the ground.
All right, let's have a discussion.
In my opinion, I think if there's a police advisory board, I think there should be at least seven, that way we could have a diverse group and enough different ideas to make informed decisions.
All right, anyone else?
How big would the Special Events Committee be? How big would the Special Events Committee be?
Right now, we were talking about between three and seven members.
Okay.
And of course, we're going to recruit heavily, it would, to, and to Commissioner Mann's point, having a larger group to be more representative is certainly desired, it was certainly desired. So we'll, we've got some strategies, everything from water bills to social media to knocking doors, we're going to try and find ways, and we also request help from anybody listening, and of course, members of the Board, because getting the word out will be important.
Let me get this clarified now. Tonight, we're just establishing, we're voting to establish a special events and police advisory board, but we'll come back at a later date with suggestions for members because certainly hadn't had any fairness in who they'd like to represent on these boards, and so they got to go back and think about it, am I right?
Yes, sir, that's exactly right. So this, by establishing this, we'll go ahead and have our campaign solicit folks, also go back to folks who've already submitted, because we've had a number of folks who submitted for committees, bring that back to the Board and get some good folks, get some good folks signed up here.
Well, I think we've had a special events committee that's been doing a good job anyhow, but it has not been really authorized, is that what it is?
Yes, sir. All right.
I think it's a good idea. I like it, and if there's no discussion, I'll make a motion, I'll make a new amendment. I'll make a motion that we accept the Police Advisory Board Special Event Form that, that wording I need, with three to seven signatures.
All right, can we get a second?
Second.
All right. Take the poll.
Yes, sir. Roll call. Mayor Protem Selby, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Ironay. Commissioner Borland, Ironay.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Ironay.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Ironay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carries.
All right, the motion carries. Now, we established the, I guess you'll take care of it, I mean, as far as setting it up and then?
Yes, sir.
How about, have you got in your mind right now, how are you going to get the things from each member of the Board?
Yes, sir. What we're coming, our game plan involves a number of stats, but we're going to do, yes, it's okay to do website and social media and newspaper, but not everybody's on the computer, not everybody reads the newspaper. So we want to put it, we can get it every household by getting it in the water bill, including an application. We also want to find ways to recruit whether elected officials, appointed officials, or community leaders, to have them share it with friends, neighbors, church members, whatever it may be, because in those cases, if we need to do like a self-addressed fan envelope, we can have some of those go along, so they can just mail it in. We're trying to make it as easy as possible for folks to, and also for folks to hear about it from different sources.
But the Commissioners will have the final say.
Yes, sir. Those, the Commissioners are the ones who have.
We would have vigilante boards.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They're, the Board has, the Board has the final say and would actually receive those applications and review them, so we'll make sure they get them to you, sir.
Okay. All right, you're in business.
Mayor, and as the manager said, we already have, you know, like an application for special business, but I would not know.
Okay, that's good. That's good.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Okay. Item number eight B on the agenda. This is consideration of program contribution for Community Garden. This particular item, this particular item was, was a board, a board member, a board member driven in terms of getting it on the agenda, but remember, this Board and the community heard about this particular topic previously through the presentation from the, from the actual program team. They are, this is the Peace Garden Project, and we also verified that this group is indeed, through the IRS, listed as a nonprofit, as a nonprofit organization in accordance with the law there. So in this case, it was brought up, since the Board had heard about it, it was brought up as a potential contribution for this program and how they'd serve the community, both in terms of the donation of distribution of produce to community members, which has been documented, as well as the Youth Leadership Institute. So all of those programs would fall into that umbrella. So this, it would be up to the decision of the Board, should they choose to make a program contribution out of the Board's discretionary fund that's already existing in the budget.
All right, you heard from town manager, a discussion.
When it was brought up, was a, was a particular number brought up in terms of contribution?
$100.
About?
$500.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's a great organization, run by good people, and it's something that's going on right now, where we're starred for so many programs and things. I mean, this is, it's, it's kind of a drop in the hat for the town to, you know, help out a good organization, so I'm all for it.
And the organization on the Peace Gardens, as Dr. Lewis said when she presented to us, she, she's actually having youth in our community. She's teaching youth how to, how to feed themselves by the garden. She's educating them, she's getting them involved. Of course, with our parks and things, clothing, parks and recreation from the county, we're helping engage the children as well this summer. With the stipend that she pays them every week for the planning, and then they have a curriculum that she goes by, so it's all about our youth, all of our empowerment, our youth, and giving, and they have something to do with the Peace Garden.
All right. We, can we throw it to? Sounds like it's advised pretty well.
I'd like to make a, I'd appreciate a thousand dollars.
Can I say this, this Commissioner Collins? Can we, can we do the $500 over a three-year period, or however long this, this organization lasts in the community? So not only this year, but the next two years?
I didn't understand.
You want to make a recurring $500?
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know, you guys started talking at the same time, so also Eddie suggested... Eddie, uh, suggested a thousand dollars rather than $500 as well.
Yes. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll unpack this for a second, so we do have a motion on the floor for Commissioner Mann for a thousand dollars, uh, of contribution, I didn't hear a second, but of course, discussion there.
Well, we'll do that real fast. Can we get a second on $500?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, now we have a motion and a second on $500 donation, contribution, or whatever you call it.
Yes, yes, sir, and so, and for the, for the public, the, the second came from Commissioner Borland, um, with, and with regard to Commissioner Collins suggesting, it's certainly a lot, it's a laudable goal, I'm not certain if the board, i, 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 I'm wondering if it should be reflected in the minutes as a suggestion for next year's budget, I'm not sure if we can encumber a fut, a future board or a future budget.
In other words, you're ready for $500 now.
We, yes, the, the board's discretionary fund has that amount in right now, sir.
You can't encumber the board for two or three years, I.
I, I think that'd be problematic since we don't know what that board may look like in three years.
Well, I don't think it's a form of motion, so we have a motion second on the floor for $1000 contribution, so let's go with that. All right. All in favor, call the board.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, roll, a roll call, um, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Selby, Iron A.
Yes, I'm aye.
Uh, Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Sorry, aye.
Okay, Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, you have a, you have a, a passing vote.
Motion carries unanimous, uh, we, we'll have $1000 contribution to the Community Garden.
And just in our children.
Yes, yes, sir, and with that, with that direction, we can go ahead and take care of that at the staff level.
You, you will have it.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Thank you, sir, and then item 8C on the agenda of old business, this is a consideration request by the homeowners of Marsh's Light regarding the Marsh's Light Boardwalk. Uh, as the, as the public may recall, there was a presentation, an advocacy presentation, uh, re, representing the, uh, mem, residents, uh, at, uh, homeowners there at Marsh's Light, uh, in the staff report, of course, we had, we had, the board had asked us to get a cost estimate for the first step in the feasibility process, which would be the en, an engineering study of what does it look like now, what are potential future costs, either of replacement or repair over time. Uh, we had received a, uh, an estimate for that, that engineering study from a qualified engineering firm in the amount of $2,800. There is money available in the board's discretionary fund, should the board choose to go ahead. Uh, also in the staff report, we noted there would, if, if the board proceeded with that, should choose to proceed with this, there would be other feasibility tasks in the future after that, such as assessment of, you know, legal fees and other things, uh, but I, and I did include a copy of the existing easement and maintenance agreement for your, for your review. So, at this point, uh, it was put up on, but it was put up for discussion whether we should proceed with that first step in the feasibility, which would be to direct the town manager to contract with a consultant to assess the Marsh's Light Boardwalk, um, and to take that out of the board discretionary fund.
Um, but this item here, this is no way committing to it at all.
No, sir, this is just the first step in the, in assessing the feasibility, so the board would have full information, whether it be, and this would be about costs and, you know, the co, cost ramifications, and any future feasibility steps would go to things like legal or other, other types of things, uh, but this is considered a first step in that feasibility assessment.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can make a, a decision one way or another without doing this, so it's obviously a huge first step to seeing if it. I'm, I'm all for it, get it done.
This is, this is Christine. Um, is twenty, so $2,800, we can get that done for $2,800?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Walker, and, uh, the, we, we did, we did a, a check with an engineer to get the cost estimate for that, and of course, uh, they're, they are suitably qualified and very intimately familiar with our infrastructure down there.
Okay, that, yeah, that seems very reasonable, um, you know, in deciding what the next step is going to be for us, so, uh, I'm in favor of that as well.
Do they give any kind of timeline?
We, we believe that we could be, that could be done within about four weeks, and the town, the town is actually going to assist a little bit, because they have to do some of this from the water, and they, we were saving a little bit of money by having a town staff and its rib boat take them out there, and that would also help expedite the process.
All right. Trouble making this motion, repeat a motion in order, James, that you, uh, probably, for the justice, it's non-committal, we're just appropriating the $2,800 for engineering firm study.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Put it in motion form, I can't do that.
Yes, sir, i, if, if the board chooses, they would, the board would authorize the town manager to contract with a consultant for the assessment of the Marsh's Light Boardwalk and pay the cost for such services out of the board's discretionary fund.
All right, you've heard the motion presented by town manager.
I move to authorize the town manager to contract with a consultant for the assessment of the Marsh's Light Boardwalk and pay the cost of services out of the board's discretionary.
I'm dying there.
I got a baby.
Good, that, we'll, we'll take Jason's, uh, uh, motion over the town manager's, of course.
Well.
Is a second that motion.
Yeah, I'll second it, if, if Commissioner Borland did it like that, I definitely.
All right, with the motion second, we, uh, at the acceleration time manager, engineering firm, uh, to study.
Yes, sir, um, Mayor Pro Tem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
There you have it, you, your, the motion is carrying.
Motion carries, you'll take care of everything, James, and proceed according to plan.
Yes, sir.
All right, it, that takes care of old business, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, we got, uh, mayor and commissioner comments, I'm going to save mine till last and take priority for the chair. Christine?
Yes, sir. Um, I am interested to see, uh, what everyone thinks of Tim's suggestion on the parking downtown in the line. Um, looks like that was quite a mess down there, um, and I know that some people need all the help they can get when it comes to parking, especially parallel parking like that, so, um, you know, I just, whatever we can do, you know, I know we are moving ahead with the town common, but, um, whatever we can do to, you know, make sure that we're utilizing all the parking that we do have, um, along the street, um, it would be very helpful. That's the only thing I have right now, but I, you know, I do think that it needs to be, uh, probably on the next agenda or, you know, taken care of somehow, if that, you know, if every, I'm just interested in what everyone else thinks.
Okay, Daryl?
Let me, let me. Well, I, I agree with Christine about, uh, trying to, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
I, I, I agree with Christine about trying to, uh, get the parking lines painted downtown, uh, and I'd like to, for the manager to, uh, maybe work with, uh, the business group down there and see what they can do about it.
All right, well, I'll.
That's all I got.
I'll answer both, so, since I'm in control of the agenda, I'm going to suggest we put it on the next meeting, the very next meeting, the parking lot, uh, will that be all right with you?
Yeah, yes, and let me, let me, listen, you're, you're talking about putting it in the workshop meeting in two weeks, or the next big meeting on, in October 7th?
Workshop meeting.
Okay.
Because in order to be, we ought to go ahead and handle it one way or the other, and it ought to be asked, Daryl, no, we can do it, put it on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
So that'll be taken care of, okay.
We'll, we'll bring information back to the board for them to consider whether they want to, or what steps might be appropriate in this particular instance.
Just have it read, I mean, not for bid reading, not that, but discussion.
Yes, sir.
Richie?
Uh, I guess in the meantime, can we go ahead and touch up those, those yellow areas downtown?
What?
Those yellow areas, they're already painted.
Oh, yeah, that needs to be done.
Okay, okay.
No, I, I just said they need to be done.
Yeah, okay. It's just one, one less thing you got to worry about, I guess.
That it?
Yes, that's it.
Jason?
Uh, yeah, I guess we'll talk about the, the parking for the next time, um, it's a quick meeting, but I think we got a lot, lot done, so I'm excited for some of these things. I know that Special Events Committee is going to be, uh, everything going on, they're going to have their hands full, it'll be, uh, uh, an important task how we handle some of the stuff when, uh, whenever we do get some people to fill those positions, so, looking forward to it.
Eddie?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'm also looking forward to, uh, the Special Events Committee and the Police Advisory Board, and I would like to encourage, uh, anybody from any walks of life to, to join the discussion and, uh, put an application for the board. I think all views, um, coming to play are effective and can help, uh, with some issues we may or may not have, hopefully it'll be a well-rounded, uh, maybe more of a partnership than a board. That's it.
Betty?
I did, uh, with Commissioner Mann and Commissioner Borland, said, of course, I'm, I'm excited, and certainly I'm thankful for the board for agreeing to contribute to our youth by way of Peace Garden donations, and that's awesome.
All right, I have three items, I said I wanted to reserve them for the last. I think, I think it's time that this board, uh, should start thinking and talking seriously about affordable housing. We've listened about affordable housing for two or three years all over the county, the towns have talked about it, the counties talked about it, counties come pretty close, and I'm not sure they're still not amenable to affordable housing. But, uh, it's time that many of you start thinking one way or the other, how we can, I know there's money is available, there's situations available, everything's available to affordable housing, we just got to make a move one way or the other. Maybe go back to the county and see what their intent are, and, um, if not, we can, there are two or three places that we could consider, and it's going to be long range, but we ought to start to really think about affordable housing. And we could, we, we've got the tools to do it with, because we're the only area in the whole county that's got water and sewer. And we have affordability and, uh, acceptability of the water and sewer, and we have it here and on hand, and we could have a start where nobody else could. That's number one, I'm just talking now.
I agree.
Uh, clean up the causeway, I know that's going to be touchy, but I'm just going to suggest it. Parks Code pays half of our total tax base, not county and sewer and water. And I think we could pitch in along with the county, if we could get the county to do it, keep the causeway clean. There's been several people, uh, that we know is close to us that volunteered to go on out there to clean it up and, uh, pick up. I think we could at least hire somebody part-time, maybe one day a week, or whatever it takes, to go clean up one side of the causeway, and then go back, go out and clean up the other side. There's been a study, everybody says it's trash trucks, but it's not the trash trucks, it's creating all that trash, it's people throwing out trucks and cars and debris falling out of back of construction trucks. And, uh, I think we, we, we have an obligation to Parks Code and the Manio, I don't know who owns that, the state owns the property, but we, we, uh, we, we control Parks Code and Midway Junction, so who's in the middle, I don't know, but we got an obligation to, uh, to it to some degree, along with the county. State's not going to do it, the state used to do it, the state should do it, the state is obligated. They got a terrible situation in contracting, it's not working with ours, if you notice our streets out here on the main highway are hideous. Used to go down about once a month and clean the, uh, shoulders of the road, the sidewalk, curb and gutter. And they're stacked up dirt and debris stacked up all the way down, and, and really, it's the state's responsibility, and I, I don't know why we can't get them to do it, I don't know if they've been asked or not. But I think, I think we have an obligation to, for that causeway, just for the beauty of, of the area and protect us, make it look cleaner. Now I have a, have you got any bids on that property across from the church?
Uh, uh, no, Mr. Mayor, the, the bids are due on September 15th, and, uh, we're, we have, there has been some interest in the property, and I'm curious to see what comes in. I've noticed in other bid situations where people will wait till the end, they, they worry that their bid will be found out or whatever, although in our case, we put them in a lockup, our things, our bids and proposals get into a locked-up safe prior to the bid deadline.
I'm going to withhold my last statement then, if the bid is not in, you don't know who's going to bid, or?
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay, that's all I have. Anything else come for the board? It's, uh, Jason said it's been a quick meeting. Anything else come for the board? All right, adjourn until, uh, workshop, when is it?
When?
Yes, yes, uh, and the question was the next meeting, so if there's a motion to recess meeting, it's September 16th at 5:00 PM would be the next one, sir.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, call the board.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye, aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A, aye. Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.